Good evening, I'd like to call our City Council meeting for Wednesday, May 8, 2019 to order. At this time, for our moment of silence, I think we want to remember, obviously, all of those that have been affected by the flood, but also those that are anxiously awaiting the opportunity for recovery. Very optimistic and resilient people can do people. You know, it's great to see this community because as we literally all rallied to help under the moment of the flooding in our southeast downtown Davenport and also along into the west end. As that, the initial trauma ended of that, and it still continues for many, there were other events all over the community. The Gonzo Cinco de Mayo Run and the First Baptist Punch Group for the family, for the community in that area. There was another Cinco de Mayo event throughout the community, people coming together and a lot of people cutting their grass, excited about going forward, but being mindful of the work we still yet have to do. So with all that in mind, let's have a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Alderman Ambrose, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Brian, would you call the roll, please?
Ambrose?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Rossen?
Here.
Dickman?
Here.
Tompkins?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
McGuinness?
Here.
Clule?
Mattson?
Here.
And Dunn?
Here.
Nine present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, and again, I want to wish you a good evening, and as we begin this meeting of our City Council, I want to welcome you and all those in attendance and also those who are viewing the meeting on television or on the Internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We are happy that you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share, to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens, for the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, and those in attendance and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us, and that cute baby that's back there, too. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cellphones and other electronic handheld devices as they can interfere with the audio system and be disruptive here in the chambers. If you wish to address the council on a specific item on the discussion agenda, you are encouraged to do so during that discussion item. You'll also have an opportunity to address the council under public with business portion of the meeting which will occur towards the end. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself, and speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. We will ask that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes. I ask that everyone observe, and I know you all will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. So thank you again for being here. First of all, will an Alderman move minutes of our City Council meeting of April 24th? It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much, those are approved. Is there a City Administrator update this evening?
Yes, Your Honor, I wanted to provide an update regarding the flood. So after our record-setting day last week hitting 22.7, we have receded down to 19.81 as of four o'clock this afternoon. That is still significantly into major flood stage. Based on the current projections, we're looking at 18 feet, which is where we start to breathe a tiny sigh of relief next Wednesday, but our targets really to get out of these major flood stages are 15 for downtown and 13 for the west end. We will start kind of transitioning tomorrow a little bit, there are two flood recovery informational meetings scheduled. The one for the businesses is tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. in the police department, the one for the residents is at 6:00 p.m. tomorrow night at the Roosevelt Community Center. We will continue to share a lot of that information through our website and other resources as well. For those who need resources, either those wanting to volunteer, the businesses who are starting their cleanup efforts and want volunteers, they're encouraged to contact the Scott County Emergency Management Agency at (563) 484-3086. The call center will be staffed basically Monday through Friday from 9:00 to 5:00 until we stand down the EOC. From a supply side, we're starting to stand up the donation center, so the Salvation Army will be taking over the old Office Max at North Park Mall, and that will open up Friday and Saturday, May 10th, so this weekend from 10:00 to 6:00. That center will also stay open Monday through Saturday, 10:00 to 6:00 through the end of May. They're working on flood cleanup kits, water, et cetera, that'll be available for pickup at that location. Those also wanting cleanup kits can contact the American Red Cross at (309) 743-2166. The state, given what Iowa has faced this year, also has a fantastic website that it's built that people are encouraged to go to, which is floods2019.iowa.gov. And lastly, we are still in a major flood, and we will continue our operational efforts across the riverfront associated with that, but staff is now actively transitioning into the assessment phase as well as the recovery phase. So you'll start to see things appearing on your agenda starting next cycle.
Thank you very much. Will then Alderman move the approval of the report of the committee, the whole, for May 1st, 2019? It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. That's approved. We have one appointment and two proclamations this evening. First is our appointment to the Civil Service Commission, that's a new appointment, Michael Shirts. Is there someone who would move that appointment?
Simmons.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. And we want to thank Mr. Shirts for jumping on board and helping and volunteering his time and efforts to this important cause. Next, we have two proclamations this evening. First, Alderman Gripp is going to do the first one, Kids to Park Day, and he's going to lead that proclamation and present it.
Thank you, thank you, Your Honor. The proclamation reads, "Whereas, May 18th, 2019 is the ninth Kids to Park Day organized and launched by the National Park Trust. Whereas, Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's parks. Whereas, it is important to introduce a new generation to our nation's parks because of the decline in park attendance over the last decades. Whereas, we should always encourage children as well as adults to lead an active lifestyle. Whereas, Kids to Parks Day is open to people of all ages across the country to encourage a large and diverse group of participants. Whereas, Kids to Park Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and outdoors. Now therefore, we, Mayor Frank Klipsch and the Davenport City Council, do hereby proclaim May 18th, 2019 as Kids to Park Day in the city of Davenport, and urge all residents to take the children in their lives to a neighborhood, state, or national park dated this 8th day of May, 2019." I move the proclamation.
There's a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? This proclamation passes, Your Honor. Thank you very much, and I think we're going to present this to Chad Dyson, our Director of Parks and Recreation for Kids to Park Day.
Thank you. For all the work you and your department do for our Parks and Recreation and the parks in our community and supporting being all the kids into parks on May 18th, thank you. Are you still short?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor and Council for this proclamation. Exciting note, May 18th is actually our opening of the Fegy Berry Learning Center for the season, and we have our first family fun day from 12 to 5 that day, so we encourage everybody to come on out, not only to Fegy Berry, but to all our great parks in the city on May 18th, so, thank you.
Thank you, Chad, and your whole team, and we had a great meeting with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board yesterday, that whole group, and we want to thank you and all your efforts for that. The next, we have our second proclamation is Military Appreciation Week, and Alderman Mattson is going to lead and present that proclamation.
Thank you, Your Honor. City Davenport, Iowa proclamation. Whereas the city of Davenport recognizes the sacrifices and dedication of the active, retired, and future service members of the United States military and their families, and whereas the city of Davenport and the Quad City region as a whole is home to many of these service members with our close proximity to and deep appreciation of the Rock Island Arsenal and multiple military installations, and whereas these service members are a critical part of our region, filling roles as coworkers, neighbors, and friends. They strengthen the social fabric of this area as outstanding role models and community leaders, and whereas many service members have heroically given their lives in conflict for the defense of our freedom and strength as members of this great nation, and whereas it is crucial to recognize and celebrate the veterans of these conflicts and to be aware of and responsive to their ongoing needs, both physical and emotional, and whereas civilian workers at facilities such as the Rock Island Arsenal play an important role in the support of these service members, the strength of the United States and its promise of freedom, and the success of the Quad City region as a whole, and whereas citizens of the city of Davenport extend their gratitude and appreciation to all military service members and veterans for their service and sacrifices. So now, therefore, we, Frank Klipsch, Mayor, and the City Council of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May 12th through May 18th as Military Appreciation Week in the city of Davenport. I move the proclamation.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you, and I just want to, I've spoken to both General James and General Gamble, both of them unfortunately had to be out of town, but more importantly, I get to introduce my good friend Mike Hutchison, who's the senior civilian leader on the island, he's Deputy Commander to the Army Sustainment Command, and Colonel Scott Dobizinski, Deputy Chief of Staff, Army Sustainment Command. If you two gentlemen come up, we want to come out and present the proclamation.
Obviously, I know General Gamble really wanted to be here, but he got voluntold to be at Fort Lee, Virginia today and tomorrow. He'll be back tomorrow night, he will be here on Monday for another event here at, I believe, City Hall. I will tell you that not only General Gamble, but most of the military, all the military members on the island just love this community and the way this community embraces not only the arsenal for the 6,600 jobs that it provides to the community, but also the way the community just kind of embraces and holds up our military members and treats them with such great respect and courtesy. So I just want to thank not only the City Council and Mr. Mayor, but I just want to thank all the citizens of Davenport and the Quad Cities for everything they do for our soldiers over on the island. Scott, you want anything?
I just want to say thank you very much, and Mr. Hutchison is exactly correct when it comes to the military members. We do very much appreciate what the city does for us and recognizes us, and we very much thank you for this proclamation. It just shows the partnership and the friendship we have in the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, let's give him a round of applause. We have a presentation, one presentation, it's one of the ones I enjoy doing the most, and that's swearing in. We're going to be swearing in some new firefighters this evening, so Chief, why don't you join me up here, and I'll meet you up in front, and we'll make the presentations and the swearing
Mr. Mayor, Council, Mike Carleston, Fire Chief, this is a very proud moment for the Fire Chief of any department to do this, and a very proud moment for the Davenport Fire Department to represent and honor these four new members of our organization. These four members actually started with the Davenport Fire Department about mid-February of this year. They went through over 300 hours of training, and after that, we were able to put them on shift, and they've been on 24-hour shifts for about the last month now. But this is a great opportunity to celebrate with their families and actually have a swearing in ceremony with all of you tonight. So first, I'd like to call Zach Mickelright. Zach Mickelright was born and raised in Davenport, Iowa. He graduated from West High School in May 2004. Shortly after graduation, he enlisted in the Marine Corps and graduated recruit training the following October. He spent 14 years in the Marine Corps Reserves, serving at two deployments, one in Iraq in 2007 and one in Africa in 2012. He separated from the Marine Corps in March 2018 as a Staff Sergeant. Zach is a certified EMT through University of Iowa, and he is working towards his firefighter one and firefighter two certificate. Zach enjoys martial arts, deck hockey, traveling, and spending time with friends and family. His father, Dean, will be pinning his badge tonight.
Zach, will you raise your right hand? Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Zachary Mickelright.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a firefighter.
Discharge all the duties of a firefighter.
In the city of Davenport.
In the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Come on up, Dad. He's a paramedic, so if you stick on me, you can find him. Let's get all together for a picture. All right, congratulations. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to call out firefighter Andrew DeVita.
Andrew grew up in Rockford, Illinois. He attended Bolin High School and received his Associate's in Fire Science from the College of DuPage. He went on to Western Illinois University, where he then received his Bachelor's in Fire Science. Andrew has his EMT-B and is currently working on his firefighter one and firefighter two certificates. He enjoys watching his favorite sports teams, the Manchester United and the Chicago Blackhawks, along with playing with his dog, Mia. His father, Steve, will be pinning his badge tonight.
You've told me he's got it memorized, but I'm going to read it anyway. Thank you very much. I state your name.
I, Andrew DeVita.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a firefighter.
Discharge all the duties of a firefighter.
In the city of Davenport.
In the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Good job. Thank you very much.
James grew up in Peaking, Illinois. He graduated from Peaking Community High School, and then he graduated from Illinois Central College with the Associate's in Fire Science. He is currently working towards his firefighter one and firefighter two certificates, as well as transferring his EMT license over from Illinois. In his free time, he enjoys spending time with his family. He is married, Lindsay, with two children, Trey and Lexi. His son Trey and daughter Lexi will be pinning his badge on tonight.
Stand right next to me, we'll be sufficient. Okay, here we go. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, James Rogers.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a firefighter.
Discharge all the duties of a firefighter.
In the city of Davenport.
In the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
You got it, man? You always work together with your sister as well. It's always good to be honest.
That's right.
Good job. You guys get a picture, too. Congratulations.
Wesley was born and raised in Davenport, Iowa. He graduated from Davenport West with academic honors where he played football, track, and was in the band. After graduation, he attended vocational school where he specialized in welding. Wesley worked at John Deere Harvester Works as a welder for 11 years before being employed with the city of Davenport. He has been a volunteer for the city of Princeton for the last eight years where he and his family reside. Wesley is an EMT and firefighter one, he is currently in the process of obtaining his firefighter two certificate. In his free time, he enjoys hunting, fishing, boating, and spending time with family. He has two daughters, Nora and Claire, and his wife Rebecca will be pinning his badge on tonight.
Raise your hand. I state your name.
I, Wesley Doring.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a firefighter.
Discharge all the duties of a firefighter.
In the city of Davenport.
In the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations. We appreciate all your support for the fire department, thank you. Okay, our next item, and I'm going to go first today on the agenda, is our communications. One, I just want to let everybody know, I've done a lot of, we've talked to a lot of people in our community, and I'm going to create a task force to review the response to the current flooding and develop recommendations for future flood mitigation and control. I think it's important, people want to be involved, we'll put this task force together, look at what we've done and how we're doing it, but more importantly, look towards the future. So we're going to set that up and make sure as we move forward, we'll let you know, we'll start to develop this group. It's not going to be a giant group, but it'll be one that's good broadly representative from the east to the west, individuals to participate. So I just want to let everybody know that, and we'll start that process very soon. Obviously, we want to continue with the recovery efforts right now, but it's important as we move forward that we not only look at recovery, but also look towards the future. So we'll be looking at all of those as we move forward. And any others? Yes, Alderman Mattson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple things if I may. There's a media release that went out, but just to add publicly some things on Military Appreciation Week. You see the banners, and I appreciate all the work the city and the council's done to support this. The city provides free green fees to the military members and active-duty and veterans for all of next week, free city bus rides, and of course, the Figgy and the Putnam participate. So there's a lot of perks going on, and it's just our simple way of recognizing and showing a little gratitude for the service that they do. Then there's, draw attention to, as summer's coming along, we've had a summer kid pass for a long time, and I appreciate Mr. Dyson, and I've talked with the schools, too, they are now pushing this hard, so I'd ask everybody, there's a pass that you can get, so it gets you into all the Riverboats, Riverboat, River Bandits Home Games, you can swim at the Aquatic Centers, the pools, maybe swimming, right? Golf at Red Hawk, workout at the YMCA, ice skate at the River's Edge, look at, again, the Putnam and the city bus, and you can get this pass, so previously, a lot of people have bought passes for kids, so I just want to draw attention to that. And then Mayor, I appreciate your comments on the task force, I have some comments about that, too, I want to just recognize and thank Ms. Spiegel, Ms. Gleason, for public works and the city staff and all the work they did. I was happy to go on a little tour that Alderman Dunn held, and with a few other folks, and I know he's going to talk about this, I won't say much, but all the work that's going in and all the efforts that the city staff is putting into this is wonderful. But I, too, believe that we should have a panel, a commission, a task force to review, because ever since my father's talked about the '65 flood, and everybody talks about what we did, or should have done, or would have done, or everything after '65, and '93, and 2001, and et cetera, but I don't know that we've ever had, brought a bunch of people together, community partners, city staff, experts, Corps of Engineer, folks like that together in one place to discuss and move forward. And as the issue is forefront in our minds right now, and as it always does when something happens, we talk about it, we have a lot of people thinking about what we should do, whether it's a flood wall, we know the expense is pretty big with that, but how we but how we do with HESCOs, how we do Modern Wimmer Park, and maybe we do a hybrid of that, et cetera. I think we need a whole bunch of folks to come together and help us as we move forward with flooding and as, whether climates change and grow or not, and as we have the flood conditions go. Again, we do a great job of how we deal with it now, but is this, is this what we want to do forward, moving forward? So, private stakeholders, government agencies, the West End folks, our Corps of Engineers, and of course, our council. So, I appreciate you wanting to do that, Mayor, and I fully support this, and I ask us to do this very soon. We know we have a requirement by FEMA and DHS to have a flood strategy, and we, and we use that, but it's updated periodically. I think we need to go with that and update it as, for future things. Because again, we talk about it after every flood happens, but we don't really get everybody together and decide what we want to do, because, but now's the time to do that. It's, it's important to bring everybody together in one room and discuss this so that the public is aware and have the public decide what we want to do, or help us decide what we want to do. Public Works and our safety folks have put in incredible effort and worked around the clock to protect and serve our citizens. We need to commend them for their grateful efforts. And Ms. Gleason, again, I'm going to say to you guys, because you guys, you've really worked hard in our police and fire, of course, and Ms. Spiegel with your efforts, too. So, but it is important to review strategy and processes of what we've done, what we think we're going to do, and what we expect to do later. And the only way we can really do that is, again, bringing everybody that's involved in this. The West End has different needs than the downtown has versus others, and we need to have a strategy, a comprehensive strategy that involves all these partners sitting down to discuss what Davenport wants to do for flood production. We should look at the innovative hybrid of alternatives. For example, what we do with Modern Wimmer Park and Shreveport Park and Rock Island, and with the permanent fillers, maybe we use that in the downtown. But this is too important of an issue not to address, and we have a time right now where everybody's interested, and we need to do that. So, thank you for doing that.
You're welcome. And again, I, I would agree, and I think that's the reason for, this would be, I found from Tom, more of an executive order that will set this in place and get this in motion. So, we'll be definitely in conversation with a lot of people as we put that together. Our next is Alderman McGinnis, our community engagement chair. I know she'll fill us in, and I skipped initially, but.
That's okay. That's all right. Lots to talk about tonight. Yeah, and I also want to say thank you to Public Works, to administration, everything the city's done. Also, all the volunteers. The downtown partnership has worked very hard during this time and has, has helped as well. And of course, we'll be moving forward with the meetings tomorrow and more specific plans. So, and, and hoping that water keeps to, keeps going down. So, I want to thank everybody that's done everything and a shout out to our friends in Buffalo. I was down there on Friday. It was pretty heartbreaking to see what they deal with in their small town, but I saw today they were starting to clean up, but very tough down there. So, and, and best wishes to them as well. So, I did want to have a few things tonight, mostly relating to flooding. I'll try to be brief, but due to the downtown flooding, the Great Mother's Day event and Other Day event as well, the Bozart Fair has moved to the Mississippi Valley Fairgrounds this weekend, and that's, of course, at 2815 Locust Street. The Bozart Fair will be Saturday, May 11th, 10 to 5; Sunday, May 12th, 10 to 4. It's typically downtown, but moving there because of the flooding. The Naham Marsh Nature Center is currently closed due to flooding. The birding tours and wildflower walks scheduled for May, and those are listed, the times and dates are listed on their website. But they will be held at the Fairmont Cemetery at 3902 Rockingham Road, meet at the crematorium for that activity. And then, the Toddler Tail Events will be held instead of at the Naham, at the SEC Urban Campus at 101 West Third Street, Room W111. And again, you can find the dates and times for those events on the Naham website. Just a reminder that this weekend's Freight House, Farmers Markets, again, will be located at the Scott County Administrative Building at Fourth and Gaines. It was packed along there last weekend. Hopefully, it'll be another great weekend, and we'll have folks coming down. And again, that's a Saturday and Sunday event. And just one last note. Ryan Dean Roberson recently resigned as the Third Ward Representative to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. I'd really like to thank Mr. Roberson for his service to the city and to ask anyone who is in Third Ward who's interested in filling the position to please give me a call, 563-594-0628. And I can talk to you about details, or you can email me. You can find my email address on the city's website. So, if you're interested, let me know, because we would like to move forward with this. But again, thanks very much to Mr. Roberson for his service. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Your Honor. Elderwoman Tompkins and I just came from the retirement celebration of Tim Wilkinson, who is the departing executive director of the Greater Davenport Redevelopment Corporation, the GDRC. He has been the only professional staff person who has served the GDRC, and he's done exceptionally well. He's been a part of the Sterilite Deal and the Craft Deal and all of the other great businesses that we have at the Eastern Iowa Industrial Center. He wanted to pass along to our city staff, specifically naming Sarah, Suzanne, and Bruce that our Economic Development Department has been great to work with over the years. And that partnership and the good relationship that you all have had has led to the successes that we've seen in that industrial park. So, we wanted to make sure that that was known. And I wanted to take the time to publicly thank him for his service to the community, the years that he did it. And we now have a gentleman named Roy Winland who is coming in, and he is an exceptional talent. I think he's going to take the GDRC in a great direction. And Alderwoman Tompkins and I have asked to take a time on a Tuesday to get Roy to our Tuesday briefing so everyone on the council can be introduced to him and know who is representing us there on the GDRC. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to thank my colleagues, Alderman Mattson, Gripp, and McGinnis, who joined me in a board meeting this weekend with the neighbors and Congressman Loebzak and State Representative Jim Lykem. We had a pretty good, pretty packed house. You know, we've had a lot of concerns this week. It's been kind of hectic. We've had a lot of misinformation out in the media and social media. You know, the dike broke and we're flooded, and we got all kinds of issues. And it was really interesting, and I want to thank the city administrator for coming down and reassuring folks that, you know, we have their back. And I will tell you, I've been involved with the Flood and the Garden Edition since, actually, 1965, because I was a little kid then. But I've been there for every flood, every rain event, and I want to tell you, I've never been more proud, as I am this year, with the response we've gotten from Public Works. These guys have busted there. They've done a fantastic job. And anybody that says they haven't been there and they haven't done anything is full of it. I want to tell you, I've had a lot of folks this week call me, email me, knock on my door, and what they, what they told me is, we want to pass along our appreciation to Public Works. Please let them know that we appreciate everything you've done, and thank you for being there. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. I just wanted to mention as well, you've also done a yeoman's job. I was down a number of times over the last few days, and you're always there. And they know who their alderman is, that's for sure, in the First Ward. So, thank you for all your efforts. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. First off, yeah, I agree. Our staff's done a great job. Corey, Nicole, you know, if it wasn't for one small fault, we would be considered the geniuses of all time. But because we got, you know, a naysayer out there that, you know, is bitter, is unfortunate. But on the goods, good news and the upside is, the Fourth Ward's going to have a ward meeting next Tuesday at the Fairmont Library, and we're going to have staff there. We're going to talk about neighborhood safety and fighting crime along with how to get rid of neighborhood nuisances, which, you know, a lot of rental property, we have absentee landlords and bad tenants, and they have to be addressed. So, if you come to the meeting, those things will be addressed. We'll have the right people there to address these issues for you. So, I invite everybody. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Russen.
Thank you, Your Honor. I won't repeat some of the comments just to not be repetitive, so I'll focus on two things. On the east side of Davenport, we're going to be having a cleanup open to the public to come and participate. It's going to be on June 15th. We're meeting at 9:30 in the morning at Cork Hill Park. And we have three sites targeted. One is Kirkwood Boulevard that runs from Brady down to the Village of East Davenport. The second site is Oneida, which runs from 10th Street down to River Drive. Going to do a little bit of flood cleanup down there. And then, the third is around the Community Garden at 12th or 13th and, and Grand, and the neighborhoods immediately around there. So, we're meeting at 9:30 at Cork Hill on Saturday, June 15th. Everyone's invited to attend, and we plan on feeding everyone afterwards. So, it's a feel-good pickup, cleaning up the neighborhoods, and food after. Who can't beat that? And just a side note on the kids pass. Chad Dyson was at my ward meeting last night that was well-attended. He did a great presentation, and I actually got contacted by a couple of people that want to offer to cover kids. Some kids' passes, they're $50 for the, for the kids pass. So, if you know of anyone who, and there's other organizations that also provide scholarship. So, if you know of a child or youth that would like a kids pass but doesn't have access to the money, please let me or somebody know that, and we can most definitely get a pass to that child, okay? So, we don't want anyone going without, because it's a great program. They get access to so many things in the summer, and I would rather have the kids be actively, proactively engaged as opposed to hanging out in the neighborhoods with idle time and idle hands. So, again, if you know a young person, let me, let someone up here know, and we can get them a scholarship and get a kids pass in their hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Russen. Alderman Dickman.
Thank you, Your Honor. Wanted to remind everyone, we've got a second ward meeting coming up on the 23rd at 6:00 PM, Fairmont Library, and it's going to be about stormwater management, which is still kind of on point. And then, a note also about the kids pass. I think I asked this last year, how high it goes up in age, because I think we want to make sure that that opportunity is available to the teenage range as well, because I would also rather them be at Putnam or parks or pools instead of having fun they shouldn't in the streets. Thank you.
Thank you. One last item, I think we need to also remember, again, we can't thank Public Safety enough and Public Works. They've done a phenomenal job through all of this. But also, the Emergency Management Agency, Dave Donovan and that team, the Command Center, the Flood Control Center and Command Center, which is out at the Scott Emergency Communications Center right next to Public Works, did a phenomenal job. I was so impressed being in that room for a couple of days there, but everybody was there. Mayors from all over the area, county officials, FEMA, Coast Guard, National Guard, the Corps of Engineers, everybody was in the room, and all the social service agencies. So, if an issue came up, we could deal with it at that spot and not have to make a bunch of phone calls. So, I want to thank them for that. Also, thank the governor who was here, Congressman Loebzak, senators and state, state and both senators and legislators who were here, and also on Friday, Senator Ernst is coming. And the highlight of the trip with Alderman, I mean, with Governor Reynolds, was we actually went by boat to the water control, the water improvement plant or the sewage treatment plant. It was a long boat ride. It was about a 40-minute boat ride to get there, because you couldn't get there from here. And the important part, there was, I don't know how many were out there, 25, 20 people or something to that effect. But they were there from Monday of last week through the, through Friday and beyond, because they know, and we all know, the importance of keeping that sewage treatment plant operational. And they were there on and off 12-hour shifts, bringing food in. And the humor side, one of the workers said, "My wife called and said, 'Stay as long as you want.'" So, but they were doing, they were doing, but seriously, unbelievable job, and they were so delighted that we came, and we were able to share how important that is. So, thank to everyone, and we will continue that important work. Our next are individual items for approval on the discussion agenda. First, second consideration, ordinance for case number ROD 19-01, being the request of the city of Davenport to amend the various sections of Title 17 of the Davenport City Code entitled zoning by correcting Scrivener errors and amending certain dimensional standards. Are there any public with business who wants to talk about that item? It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion from any aldermen? Seeing none, would you call the roll, please?
Ambrose.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Russen.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Tompkins.
Yes.
Gripp.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Luhl. Mattson.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you, and that ordinance will move to third consideration. The next is first consideration for case ROZ 19-02, request of Jennifer Smith to rezone Lot 1 of Crow Valley Plaza 12th Edition from C2 Commercial Transitional District to C-OP Commercial Office Park. Property contains 9.5 acres and is located at East 56th Street, east of Utica Ridge Road. Is there any public with comment on this item? Please, come on up to the podium. If you would, give your name and ward, please, and we'd love to hear what you have to say.
My name is Bob Willis. I'm in Sixth Ward. And I have a couple of concerns I would like to share with you. And hopefully, these concerns will be taken in consideration before more development comes about in our area. There are two concerns that I have. Is there runoff water from Clubhouse Drive area? I don't know if you have a map there. I gave you each a copy of some photos here. We'll go over that. And the water is running across from the Clubhouse Drive down under the common area, and it's coming out behind us in a ditch, in a storm ditch. And the second concern is the backup water at the Crow Valley Golf Course driving range when it rains. Okay, I brought some photos along. If you would refer to the first page of photo 1, 1 through 1, 4. If you look at 1, 1, that's a photo for Clubhouse Drive, and that water has been running down through our area there and is forming a ditch. And then, if you look at 1.4, if you look in the other direction, that water runs down across that grass there and it goes into our ditch right there. If you refer to 1.2, there's a culvert there that's on the right-hand side of our ditch there. That was put in in the last year here by the city, I believe. And it, I think it's a two-foot pipe there, and it runs back towards Clubhouse Drive, and I have not seen any water come out of that yet. And that's a concern for us, and it's coming across the grass here. Okay, if you would go to page 2, and I have these photos, I had a little problem printing them off here, but anyway, if you look at that, that first page is a good day. All right, those are good photos. The second page are the bad day. That's when it was raining. And this is my deck in the back. And if you look at 2.1, you can see all that water above the ditch there. That's coming down off of that Clubhouse Drive. And then, if you look at 2.4, that also is water coming down off of that, coming across that grass. And it's, eventually, that's going to cause the ditch out there. Can't keep from doing it. And the other two are just, I'll explain those a little bit later here. Okay. That's a concern that I hope it will be addressed. And then, the other one is the, the Crow Valley Golf Course. If you go to page 2, there are three here. 3.1 is a photo that I took out of my house here. If there's a little green spot up there in the middle of the page, that's the Crow Valley Golf Range. If you go to page 2, or 3 here, 3.1 is a photo that I'd taken out of my house here. If there's a little green spot up there in the middle of the page, that's the Crow Valley Golf Range. And then if you go to page 3, 3-3 and 3-4, there is a, I would say, a 24-inch pipe out there. That could even be, it could be a little bit bigger than that, maybe 36. There's a 36-inch pipe. They developed the, or changed that driving range within the last two years. And what they did was put that pipe underneath there to take care of this water runoff. And if you go back to page 1.3 here, there's a storm manhole. That's outside my house right there. And what's that does, that's got a 24-inch pipe coming in from 58th Street and 59th Street, and that's all the drainage coming from those two streets into that manhole. And then if, there's a 48-inch pipe coming in from Clubhouse Drive, and then both of those drain out into my ditch, which is 48 inches. And if you, and we also have water coming from the east side of Crow Valley Villas, and the water coming from my area, if you think that a 48-inch pipe coming down through there, and the water coming from the other direction, and the water coming from the new development is also coming in that same area at, on 3.3, there's no way that water is going to get away. And the first, when they first developed that, and they had a rain there, and I was really concerned about it, that it would back up into our house. Well, it didn't. The hill, if you look at that picture, what happens is it creates a pond there, and then eventually, it's going to go up over that hill. And that hill is lower than my house, so we're safe with it.
If you could wrap up that time, we had the five-minute time limit.
Okay. And that's my two concerns.
Thank you. And again, it's a note, this is the first consideration. We go through this, so I know we'd all want more information, a little bit about that. Maybe our Public Works and our planning folks can take a look at the pictures you have and give us some more information.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else? Will the clerk call? I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, my name's Joy Willis, and I live in the 6th Ward. And I just want to say, we've lived there about nine years, and the last two years, we've had the growing concern with the water drainage. It's an issue that I hope we take very seriously, because it needs to be fixed before it gets worse than it is. That water drainage is a very big problem, and the drainage is not going to correct itself. It needs to be addressed now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Is there a second? Yes, there are. Again, would the clerk call the roll, please?
Condon.
Oh, any discussion by the council? I'm sorry. Any from the council? Yes. Alderman McGinnis.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Given Mr. Willis' photos, if we're going to talk about this next week, could we like a little understanding of, I mean, the relationship of the golf course to the property that we're talking about? And also, perhaps you could talk a little bit about, I don't know how much retention plan the golf course had. I know that was built at a different time, so if there is, could talk a little bit about how we might be, how we might be dealing with that on this property? Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Condon.
Kind of along the same lines. If Public Works is able to try to give us some reassurance that this is doing what it's designed to do, that would give us some peace of mind. From being around these things, I know that when they fill up anywhere near capacity, it's alarming, and I've been personally alarmed. But sometimes, they're doing exactly what they're meant to do. They fill up, they retain the rain, and then they slowly allow it to dissipate into the drains. A little bit of confirmation that we're still performing well here would go a long ways, but on face value, the areas being full of water shouldn't discount being able to proceed with any surrounding development.
Thank you. Alderman Matson.
Thank you. And just to add, the comment about the water doesn't go through the big pipe, but it goes in the, so talk to us about that.
Thank you, Alderman Matson. Alderman Rosson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Willis, could you step up real quick? I had a question about a couple of your photos. I can tell from the photos you took, kind of the orientation where your house is and where you're taking the viewpoint, but photos 3.3 and 3.4, where is that in relation to your house? So, I see, like, in 1.3, I assume that's your house there, because the deck matches the deck. And then I see the access covers in the front and the white one next to the creek there. But then the photos in the back, the 3.3 and 3.4, where is that in relation to your home?
Okay, 3.1 I took out of my window.
3.1, okay.
That's towards the...
Looking over your deck in the back.
And then 3.2 is also out of the window, out of my back.
And that's the creek channeling water?
Yes.
Yeah. And then 3.3?
3.3 and 3.4, I walked back to the edge of the golf course and down into creek area. If you...
Okay, so this is actually on the golf course property?
Yes.
The last two, okay. Okay. Okay, that makes sense. Okay, I was trying to, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, roll call, please.
Condon.
Yes.
Rosson.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Tompkins.
Yes.
Grupp.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Clul. Matson.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Rosson.
Yes.
And Dickman.
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. And is there approval for all the items on the consent agenda? It's moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Grupp.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Clul. Matson.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Rosson.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Tompkins.
Yes.
Grupp.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Clul. Matson.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you. The committee of the whole recommends suspension of the rules and passage on first consideration. Is there a motion to suspend the rules? First and second, and roll call, please.
Dickman.
Yes.
Tompkins.
Yes.
Grupp.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Clul. Matson.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Rosson.
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Great. Is there a motion for passage of second and third considerations? It's moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Tompkins.
Yes.
Grupp.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Clul. Matson.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Rosson.
Yes.
And Dickman.
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. And is there approval for all the items on the consent agenda? It's moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Grupp.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Clul.
Yes.
Matson.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Rosson.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Tompkins.
Yes.
Grupp.
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you. The motion, the rules are now suspended, and we have a motion approving a noise variance request for the following event. Joni Steele, Family Care Solutions, flood victim fundraiser, 4893 Utica Ridge Road, Saturday, May 11th, 2019, from 4:00 PM until 9:00 PM. Outdoor music over 50 dB A in Ward 6. Is there any public with comment? Seeing no one, will an alderman move the motion? Any discussion from any aldermen?